All right, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting at the Pelham School Committee at 6:00. And we'll start with roll call attendance. Margaret.
Stanser present.
Ron?
Ron, Menino present.
Sarah Best?
Kenny present.
Brenda?
Farlow present.
And Hall present. All right, first up is approving the minutes of April 14th and May 19th. So we'll start with the April minutes. Do folks have questions, comments, edits? Sarah Best?
So I have under section five, I think it was the principal update, that music was one of the specials in the woods also. And then I think we should probably capitalize the Open Sci Ed because that's the name of the grant, right? So add that. And then just shortly after that, it says all of our schools and Amherst Pelham. I think it's specifically, I think we just need to rework that sentence because it doesn't, Pelham only has the one.
So maybe just our school?
Yeah, all of our schools. And then it's specifically the sixth grade, I think. And then I had written down, school choice offers went to kindergarten, second, third, fourth, and fifth applicants. But I think-
Was it that we missed first grade, that first and fourth?
Yeah, I didn't write down first grade, but first grade.
Okay.
And then I think we were also on YouTube and StreamYard that day, not Google meets.
Oh.
On the top. And I don't remember if Doug was there, but I don't think he was. Did we have, I didn't remember, I should have looked if we had budget updates and write that part down.
Oh, now I don't remember. I remembered we talked about him with about town meeting preparation, but-
But I don't think he was there. I don't think he was at that meeting.
Okay.
And that is all I have for the 14th for April.
Yeah, Mike?
I'm just not sure, we said this on camera, but just, did we say that this meeting is being live streamed by Amherst?
No, I did not say that. This meeting is being live streamed by Amherst Media.
Yep, and thank you, Amherst Media. That was it. Sorry, I think we're supposed to say that, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the reminder. Okay, so we will cross off Doug's name then. Okay, any, any other questions, comments? Okay, all right, I move to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Margaret.
Stanser, hi.
Ron?
Menino, I.
Sarah Best?
Kenny, I.
Brenda?
Farlow, I.
And Hall, I. All right, next up is May 19th. All right, any edits, questions, comments here? Sarah Best, you want to so bad. I'm gonna let Brenda go first, though.
Just to add, I was in attendance.
Yep, my edits as well, thank you.
Okay, and then down in section, let's see, down in section 6C, there's just a piece, there's just two sentences that I quote, Ms. Bowler said that the small town school is outgrowing. I think it was just, um, some of the students being at different rates of development, some students are outgrowing the small school.
Okay, all right, that makes more sense, yep. Sarah Best?
Um, so I think we also under, so I think it was also StreamYard and YouTube for that one. And then under section five, I think it's the Georgia Malcolm Social Justice Award. And I think if we're gonna name an award after someone, their name should be listed there. And I think we were celebrating Georgia Malcolm's, wasn't that her graduation, not graduation of the-
Yeah, it was.
And then just after that, when talking about the sixth grade project, I think we just need to add something about, it was a proposed construction site in North Hampton, just for a little bit more clarity. And then I, I, under section B, the grant stimulus, I thought we were talking about S R 3, but maybe SO3 is another name for, not, okay. So yeah, I think we were talking about S R 3.
It's E S S E R, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then under the sixth, the sixth grade to arms, it was a feasibility study, like if it would work, not a facility study. There were still some costs associated with it, but not the exorbitant amount of the possibility of adding the middle school students to the high school, from what I remember. And then I think it, also, we might want to just note, everyone was in agreement about having discussion and engaging, an engaging community about it, not that, you know, we all have different feelings and thoughts, which is great. It's kind of why we can all be here and have these good conversations. But I think it's important to note that we are all very open to having more conversation and engaging the public about moving, moving the Pelham sixth grade to the regional school.
Yeah, I, yes, I agree. And I, I mean, my suggestion was just to add one more sentence at the end, just referencing like, the committee agreed that further discussion was warranted.
Our chair.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Did you have more, Sarah Best? Okay.
Nope, that's the end of mine, thank you.
Yeah, anyone else? I just had a couple small things. Under reorganized, it was Ms. Kenny self-nominated for one of the region rep positions. So it's not a regional chair, but just to represent Pelham on the region. The, oh yeah, and then in the principal updates, it's a civic literacy project, not a civic liberty project. That's in the fourth line down. Oh, and then my other one was on the sixth grade, so that was it. Okay, anything else on the minutes? All right, I move to approve the minutes of May 19th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Margaret.
Stanser, I.
Ron?
Menino, I.
Sarah Best?
Kenny, I.
Brenda?
Farlow, I.
And Hall, I. Okay, thank you. All right, next up is public comment. I am just going to share my screen here so I can scroll through. And actually, before I pull this up, I will say that this public comment document is on the website. So for members of the public, if you go to arts.org and then the Pelham School Committee portion of it, that's where you can find this, this document in its entirety. And I will say, just for everyone's benefit, I did email this around. So I'm gonna scroll through a little bit faster than normal, just because folks have had a chance to review and community members, you can find them on the website. Okay, does that look okay size-wise? Okay, great. Let's wait until school committee announcements. I mean, public comment, we typically don't comment on that, so we'll wait until that part. That's okay, great. All right, next up, superintendent's update.
Thanks, I'll be quite brief. Pelham sixth grade graduation is tomorrow night. Weather should be perfect, as opposed to probably the last two nights, one hot, one rainy right now, and jury. So timing worked out well for that, so we're excited for that one. And I think the last thing I'll say is, you know, it's been an amazing experience to see myself, as well as hear from staff, how smoothly the return to in-person has been. If you think back, where we're in March, and we're having discussion February and March about return to in-person, I think there was rightfully and legitimately a lot of fears and a lot of concerns about how that was gonna go. And I just really want to compliment the Pelham staff. Out of all the schools I've worked for, it had the highest return to in-person rate. And not that's competition, but I think it's worth noting, it was close to 90%. We'll be doing a survey that's going out sometime in the next two days to families, just to talk about how it went, how they experienced things this spring, whether they're in-person, remote, if they could do it over again, would they change their choice? Or were they pleased with the choice they made? And then asking for feedback for fall about other things we should be thinking about. So we'll collect that feedback, and it will be organized both by school and district. So Pelham will, we'll get Pelham-specific data that we'll be able to share with you in August or September, whenever we meet again, to do that. But I really just want to compliment the staff for their incredible work in re-acclimating students who had not been in school in over, in 13 months, when they started coming on April 4th, and then the rest, the following week. It's, it's been amazing, and we've seen tremendous growth in the part of students. And I'm not necessarily talking about like data or academic growth, just considering where they were when they came in and where they are now with the last day of school, a couple days away. Just the reintegration into being in a group and being in a school and being part of a community and the joyfulness that I see, you know, when I'm there. I was there last week of dismissal, and just, really just wonderful to see how they did, how students are doing. That's only because of the talented staff at Pelham. So just wanted to put a plug in and appreciation for all the, all the folks at Pelham and all they did, and all the support that we received from the larger community as well. So brief update tonight, I'll do more, you know, when we have the agenda on school choice and some other people. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there was one other piece I wanted to share, which was that in terms of stimulus funds, the recommendation that we had from the department, you know, Pelham did receive stimulus funds in terms of S R 3, and is to plan an engagement sometime in August, when we have a little better sense of what school's gonna look like for fall. The recommendation is to have a sort of public forum or hearing to get feedback from critical stakeholder groups before making decisions. So I'll work with the chair on that, but you know, I, at this point, we're a little far away from, from the year. We won't even receive the guidance on health and safety, the full guidance, until late July or early August. And I think that's gonna be really critical for us. from the year, we won't even receive the guidance on health and safety, the full guidance until late July or early August. And I think that's going to be really critical for us as we think forward to next year. I've got some school choice and some leadership updates. But those are part of the agenda. So otherwise I was going to keep my update brief tonight.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, Ron.
When did you say I should make hold my comments on the
School committee announcements item on the agenda?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any, any questions for Mike? I just, I have one question and one comment. I just, just as a parent in terms of the return to school, like my experience was the same and it was as close to seamless as possible. And I just feel like if something feels seamless, it means that there was a huge amount of work behind the scenes. That doesn't, that never happens magically. So I, yeah, I echo the, the thanks for that, just school committee and as a parent. And I had one question on, so on the survey. I mean, is it going to be clear in terms of asking for feedback that like remote learning isn't going to be an option?
It is. Yeah, we're working. We actually have, some of you might remember Obed. Who, he's wonderful. He's in grad school or he's starting grad school in the fall back in his home state of New Jersey. So we had a little graduation celebration, Debbie Smorland, myself and Obed a couple of weeks ago, which was wonderful. So we have Masahiro, who is in a similar role as Obed was last summer, and he's been working on the survey and you know, it's very clear that that's not an option. And we still would look for feedback from folks about remote, not necessarily because we're going to do it again next year, but we still want to hear how it went. We got a lot of feedback on virtual education last spring, and then we got a bunch in the fall. And we haven't really looped back particularly as it transitioned this spring, you know, we do want to receive that feedback because a lot of our attention because of the health and safety kind of the interest in health and safety did shift to the, you know, we put a lot of resources into remote, but in terms of like the administrative attention and focus. When you have students here and we're still, you know, there's a little pandemic around going on. Our attention is really focused. So we are really curious about how students experience the spring. And that's going to help us plan for them really well in terms of fall. So not necessarily continuation and we're really clear with that. We are also trying to send adult families who chose to homeschool. A little tricky to get that, but that's the third group that we are trying to email. Some of those folks were homeschooling long before COVID emerged. So we also want to be conscious that that's a choice that, you know, moderate sized group of families made in this year, but there's, there's a larger group that homeschooled prior to COVID. So, you know, it's a little tricky dissecting that group, but we still want to receive that feedback as well. But yeah, no, it's very clear that you know, and actually we're, you know, I'm interested as like both my job hat and a researcher hat. One of the questions we ask is about, you know, thoughts about fall and and I, I'm curious to see if there's a distinction between families who have not been in the building since March 13th of last year to people who have been in the spring and to understand better what feelings, emotions, thoughts people will have based on the experience they had this spring as we entered the fall. Cause I think it's going to be, I don't want, you know, I think it's important not to assume that everyone's been in school to the spring. Right. And in a place like Pelham in particular, where 90% of kids have right, that's going to be an easy assumption to fall into. And I don't want to forget that some, for some students, the return on August 30th next year will be the return that they've, you know, waited 18, 19 months for. And you know, we want to, you know, recognize that experience. So I was a long winded answer, but I thought.
No, that's helpful. And I wasn't suggesting that we should not be soliciting. I just felt like if you were asking them like, how was it? And people are like, oh yeah, keep doing this in September. Just to make sure that it was clear, like this will not continue.
Absolutely. Yep. And you'll get to meet Masahiro at some point when he shares the analysis, the survey in the fall.
Great. Any other questions for Mike? Okay. All right. Next up is chairs update. So that one is me. Obviously we don't usually set aside the time to do chair or committee member updates in Pelham, but after a pretty remarkable year, it seemed appropriate to give everyone the floor if they want it. It's not a requirement. We this year have had more and longer meetings, at least in my tenure on this committee. Anyway, we've deliberated a lot of long time questions like change and start time. We've made some difficult budget decisions. We've discussed pandemic related issues that frankly, none of us was prepared for, but we dealt with anyway. I don't mean to make us out to be martyrs. All of us are certainly here by choice and we have different reasons for it. And I also don't want to ignore some recent very Pelham specific challenges that we're all aware of. In our small town where the really small, one class per grade school is the entire school district we work to support. There's a lot of attachment and intense feeling about the school and a lot of interrelated dynamics among school stakeholders. Community members thankfully take pride in and ownership of the school. And this is really comforting and supportive pretty much all of the time. A lot of us have the sense that everyone knows one another, that we look out for each other. At the same time, the school committee members, it can also mean that we are either on the opposite side of a debate from friends and neighbors, or as we've seen tonight, that we can get a lot of negative public comment on a matter that we as a committee are not allowed to deliberate on. As difficult as it is when many are so invested in the success of the school on matters of staffing, whether it's a shift in the leadership or a personnel decision, the school committee as a public body is required to stay in a really narrowly defined lane. Our purpose and responsibilities are really clearly outlined. We oversee the budget, we evaluate the superintendent and we handle higher level policy questions. Other individuals hired for their expertise in various matters related to curriculum, child development, human resources, among many others handle everything else. With that said, members of the community are always welcome to contact the committee as a whole or individual members at any time to express continue concerns or opinions. Just because we can't deliberate on a matter doesn't mean that you can't tell us about it. And I don't mean to stifle public comment quite the opposite, but just to clarify what the school committee's role is. In order for the administration, teachers and other staff to do their jobs to make sure teaching and learning can happen effectively. We have to support that work while not deliberating on matters over which we have no authority. To some, our not engaging in certain issues could seem cold or unsympathetic, or maybe somehow disloyal to the school community. But what might be construed as lack of compassion is actually just a mandated distance from certain issues that were required to maintain. Yet from what I know about everyone on this committee, we're not a cold and unfeeling group. I think a lot of us feel really deeply and really strongly about our school and the community. But we're just bound by the rules under which we operate. One thing fortunately that we don't have to hold back on at all though, is just gratitude for all of the really, really hard work that goes into running a school district and making sure that students are learning, whether they're at home or in front of a computer. And so I'll just close my update with a very sincere thank you to the superintendent, the rest of the administration, and most of all to all of the staff at the school for everything they've done on a daily basis. And I'm sure like at night and on weekends and who knows when else to make a really exceptionally difficult year go smoothly as possible. Any school committee announcements? This would be you, Ron. Do you?
Well, first guys, a number of things. One, we've got to find a better way of covering public comment. You're right in saying that we, we can only read them in advance. I'm sure scrolling through that screen, nobody read it. I mean, unless they are some kind of speed reader. I don't know what the purpose of public comment is, other than the public to hear the comment. And this did not inform the public of the comment unless they already went to the ARPS website and read the comment. So I don't know, I have no idea how to solve that problem. I agree with you about the limits of our authority. But not to ignore the elephant in the room. I'm concerned, I'm troubled. I'm, I, I had a call with Mike earlier this week or week before, and I still don't understand the process by which the decision to terminate Will Laurie's position was made. Somehow I think, well, I'm not even sure what to say. I'm not even sure what I can say. Was it the result of a principal decision? Was it a result of bumping rights of a senior faculty member? Or was that a combination of the two? I'm unsatisfied because is this something I'll never ever know the background of? I'll never know what went into it because I'm a school committee member. I, I delayed filling out the evaluation of the, of the superintendent because I wanted to calm down and didn't want my troubled heart to color the overall evaluation. So I filled it out this morning. But I, I suggested to to Mike, maybe we could have an executive session where we get some kind of detail, some nugget of information. I know it's not within our authority. But oh, it sure seems like the public is holding us accountable. And I'm just troubled by the whole thing because I don't understand what's going on. You know, I mean, you don't care what my position is, but and I won't express it, but it seems funny. It's just, I'm troubled, period. That's my comment. I'm troubled.
Thank you. Any other school committee announcements? Yeah, Brenda, go ahead.
I'll just, I guess I'll just piggyback on what, on what Ron was just saying that I, you know, also feel kind of similar concern and some troubling feelings. And I don't know if it's appropriate for executive session, but it seems like if we're a body that's supposed to be overseeing, overseeing some of the leadership, that this is more than just one personnel decision. It seems like with the amount of outpouring of public comment that, that maybe it is appropriate for us to get a little more information.
And thank you. And I do just want to jump in like we can't deliberate on something that's not on the agenda. And so I just want to make sure that this conversation doesn't lead into something that starts to feel like a deliberation. So I need to be really clear on that. So I'm just going to focus on school committee announcements part of that. So keep the floor open. Again, not a requirement, but if anyone else would like to say anything. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. I, you know, similar to what I said, it's, it does seem like to just kind of skip over that to like have people sharing that they're feeling troubled and to not engage on that. Again, it is just a really, really specific requirement of this role that if, you know, if an item is not, we can only put items on the agenda that we are allowed to deliberate on, and we can only discuss things that are on the agenda. So if it seems like I'm just being dismissive, it's, it is part of the job. All right. Ron, I'm, I'm going to let you start, but I, I am concerned that we're getting into a deliberation here. So I, I might have
Can be put on an agenda in the future so we can understand the decision.
We cannot, we cannot discuss a personnel decision in a public meeting.
I just wanted that to be clarified.
It is. Yeah, it would not be
Wanted a clarification.
Sure. Okay. All right. New and continuing business. First item up is the school choice update. Which Mike, you had sent around, but then we're just going to talk us through that. So I'll pass it over to you.
Sure. I'm going to just display it. There we go. Hopefully that's visible. So it's good news as it relates to school choice. I really want to thank Principal Whiting Jones, who's done a tremendous amount of outreach. So what you see on the top table is a total choice applications. And it's offered declined, accepted and open slots. You can see we still do have four open slots, but this is a huge number, 22 accepted school choice seats for next year. We started. We've been talking about this for a while about the decline in school choice seats and how that was putting the school at risk. And the bottom part shows that we're slated to have 127 students. Next year, obviously this is projected, kids may move into Pelham, move out of Pelham, right? There's all sorts of things that go on. And so that would mean that Pelham next year would be 56% Pelham students and 44% choice students. Just a little more detail that's not on the charts. You know, there's still school choices still in flux. We still have a couple of families to waiting to see if they're going to accept or not. This is a total of 14 increase of total 14 total students from the current school year. An increase of 15 total school choice students going from 40 to 55. And this is what we talked about at the beginning of the school year. That we were deeply concerned. We had a number of meetings that I expressed my real concern about the viability of Pelham school if it remained in the kind of 40 or low 40s as it relates to school choice. So the fact that we are in projected to be in a much better place with accepted school choice slots for next year. Not just in kindergarten, but also you could see there's a scattering in the other grade levels, which are sometimes hard to hard to fill. That's excellent. You know, we did talking to Lee, we filled to 20. We didn't want to go above 20 in terms of filling. Although there's a couple of places we at least theoretically could have, but we chose to maintain that. You know, if this 55 students returns, that should build our school choice reserve up to a much more sustainable level. So really want to thank again, Lee in particular, but the school in general for the good work to increase our numbers. You know, there's not to minimize other things going on in the world locally or beyond, you know, worldwide locally, but the viability of home school was something we've spent a lot of time talking about. Not just this year, but over the last couple, for those who've been on the committee a while. And this is a huge step towards sustainability. So if you keep it up, it doesn't, the problem doesn't go away. But it is the case that we are situated in a much better place than we were a year ago. Or even this fall as it relates to school choice and the financial implications of it. So that's my update. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments.
Yeah, Ron, go ahead.
Will the 13 school choice parents be notified that Will Laurie will not be their kindergarten teacher?
So in general, we send out the school, all of our elementary schools, both in Pelham and Amherst, at the end of the year, send out the assignments for grade levels, what's known at that time. And this Pelham would be no different.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. If I think this came up last year, which obviously was a weird year. If there is an available slot in say like October and someone moves in and wants an available slot, can, can folks choice in anytime? Again, if there's, if there's room?
They can. We've been cautious about accepting students too late into the school year just because it, you know, sometimes a good reason people move to the area in December, they want to start a new school, you know, they want to start their new school. So, but we, we did take some students after the school year started this year. And, and that would be an opening, you know, but we tend to be a little cautious about that. In general, because you know, when you build a classroom community, yes, students can come and go at any point. But you know, we try not to fill, for instance, 20, but if we had a class of 16, we might fill two more seats and get a little higher.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, yes, Margaret, go ahead.
Do you have any idea how this compares to 2019, the beginning of the year before the pandemic?
Yes, this is a little higher. So we were in the low 50s at that point. So it's, it's matched that and gone up a bit. Yeah. I think it is worth noting that 25% of the, I think it showed this in the committee by email, but I'm not sure, 25% of all students in Pelham would be new to Pelham next year. Based on sixth graders graduating, kindergartners coming in and the number of school choice students, which is, you know, it's a pretty remarkable number if you think about it. And just movement, you know, it moved to the area and, and all that. But from the beginning of this year to the beginning of the coming year would be the, the delta would be 25%.
Sarah Bass, go ahead. These are, this is fantastic information. So I just want to say thanks to Lee for all of the work that she did with this. And why does that always happen? And also thanks to the PTO, because I know they did a lot of hard work getting the word out there and answering a lot of questions. So I just wanted to say thanks to, you know, everybody involved for getting, for doing such amazing work to get these numbers up. It really makes a huge difference. Not only for the kids next year, but for the viability of the school and for the future. So this is great news.
Thank you. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah. And I think the other thing I want to agree with everything Sarah Bass said, and just also thank, you know, Sasha and others worked on an ad for the Gazette and, you know, that looked really good and the color red, I think we got a lot of feedback that people did notice that. And you know, that looked really good and the color red, I think we got a lot of feedback that people did notice that. Uh, and both the Gazette and the Bulletin. So you know, I think continuing to think of ways the PTO did a great job with social media and uh, and video and, and all these pieces. So I think, I don't think it has to be one strategy. I think, you know, we can do the, you know, kitchen sink of, yeah, we'll do print, we'll do social media, we'll work with, you know, all those pieces. So I do think it was a collaborative community effort. Um, but you know, we're really excited to see that. I'm very excited. I think collectively, we're very excited to see these numbers because of what it, it means for the future of the school.
Yeah, thank you. Ron.
The video clips posted on the website were very effective and very compelling. They should be updated or, no, they should be updated, period.
Yeah, they were great. I agree. Anything else on the school choice update? Okay. All right. Terrific. Um, all right. Interim principal appointment update.
Sure. So about two weeks ago, the weeks got funny at the, get funny at the end of the year. You know, with Lee, uh, moving out of state, um, we did, you know, think about the best way to proceed and, and you know, I met with the staff and I shared with them a couple of weeks before that. That I was interested in pointing, appointing an interim internal person, given the timing of the year, the fact that we're in a pandemic, you know, bluntly, the pool of candidates in general for principals is, or any educational leader is not as high as it once was. Um, a lot of people are transitioning out. Um, heard from someone about another district, similar size with seven schools that had four principals leaving, you know, this spring. And so this is pretty normal, you know, normalized at the moment. You know, even at the superintendent level, that's not as relevant, you know, four of the five largest districts in the country are having superintendents leave this year or have left already. It's 5% of the schoolchildren in the whole country are having that just from those five districts for those five. So there's a lot of turnover and you know, given where we were, I felt really strongly, as did Ms. Cunningham, the assistant superintendent who oversees him for the next year, internal candidate. Who could provide stability. Um, and then for the next year, and then we can do a full search starting next winter, seemed like the best thing that someone who could hit the ground running, who knew his Pelham school and knows the Pelham school community was in the school's best interest. So I met with the staff and then I invited anyone who was interested to talk to me about anything I shared, because I talked about a bit more than that that day. Who could meet me, I unwisely chose the medical waiting room to be the room there, you know, anyone could check in with me afterwards. Cause it's hard to have comments in a room full of staff members that some people wanted to come in individually. Some people came in and kind of tandem. Uh, and a lot of people were routing for two, two individuals. And one was Mickey Darling, who's a special ed, uh, special education teacher at Pelham. And has been there a while. And one was Jess Nardisi, who's the counselor at Pelham School. That was a kind of what I heard from multiple staff members is they both had, you know, academic uh, and from the academic and social emotional front, they had leadership capacity and skills that they thought could steady the ship. And in obviously a very challenging year from start to finish that, that Pelham School has had. They express an interest. Doreen and I met with them. I think I met with them the first time without Doreen. The second time, the four of us got together to try to figure out what was the model, what worked well. I will say, I typically have very high standards for those kinds of meetings, even if it's job search, like we have at one of my other schools going on right now, actually quite literally right now. Uh, there's some finalists that I'll watch the video of later. I was really impressed with both Mickey and Jess's ability to articulate, you know, the strengths of Pelham School, some challenges they saw and how they plans they would have to move the school forward next year. And Doreen had the same impression. So we worked together to develop what would that look like? And so where we landed was that Mickey is going to be the interim principal. She has her licensure for the next year. Massachusetts has a little looser regs with that, uh, given the pandemic. So she got her emergency license, which lasts a full year till the next summer. And that Jess would retain some of her counselor duties. But would be given some release to do some additional administrative tasks. And so they, they came up with the term co-leader, uh, assistant principal doesn't really make sense. It's a very small school. And so that, that made sense. I know a number of people have asked me, okay, what's the staffing model to replace what Jess, part of Jess and Mickey did? And my answer has been, we're going to sort that out in the next couple of weeks. Uh, that Jess and Mickey have full-time jobs and very full-time jobs and very full-time jobs at the end of a school year. So when I met with the staff to announce this, people expressed joy and excitement about the choice and, and I pleaded with them and of the report so far is people have been really good about it to let them finish the year in their current roles. That, um, that Lee is the principal till the end of the year, which is upcoming very soon. Uh, and that Jess and Mickey have, again, they need to attend to the needs of their students and not have the additional responsibilities at the current time. So I want to thank the staff and community for really kind of allowing that process to play out. And we will meet over the next couple of weeks and share the kind of staffing model in terms of their replacements. We have some initial ideas, but again, from a capacity perspective, we wanted to let the dust settle a little bit on the year. Uh, and then develop with the staffing model and what made, what made sense in terms of replacing them for the next school year. So I'm really excited. I think they're going to bring a lot to the Pelham School community. They already do, uh, but they'll bring a lot in the new role. And I think they're, as I said, their understanding of, of the uniqueness that is Pelham, uh, is going to be critical in moving forward and they're, they're very complimentary skillset. So it's really happy to go and, and see the response of staff. And we do have next steps for sure, but I feel really good about the hands that we're leaving Pelham School and for the next school year. And I'm happy to take any questions anyone might have.
Great. Thanks for the update. Sarah Bass, go ahead.
So not so much a question as a comment, but I think that appointing an interim principal for the next school year was a really good idea and I appreciate that. Um, and I think those are two people that will have been part of the school community for a long time, know how it works, knows the kids, knows the families, know a lot of things, and we're really lucky to have both of them. So good, good choices.
Yeah, it says a lot about them that they're willing to step up late in the school year, uh, thinking about next year, which, you know, hopefully we're closer to normal. I think we will be, but can't say it'll be totally normal. Going into next year, right? Knock on wood, but at the same time, you know, I think their, their love of the kids and the community of Pelham is what drove them to say, yeah, I'll take this on for a year. I care so deeply about the community. I think it says a lot about what motivates them and why they'll be good in the role.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments on principal appointment? Um, yeah, well, thank you for that update. And yes, I think that, um, I like that the process was still, you know, was similar for any other interim thing and it was thoughtful and, um, but I think that landing on internal folks who were willing to step up really does sound like a wise choice for next year. And I really appreciate Mickey and Jess for that. That's, it takes a lot to do that and I really appreciate that. Okay. Next up is a warrant reports. Um, I just have three tonight that I'll run through. I authorized by my signature to payroll in the amount of $60,222.49 for a warrant dated June 2nd, 2021. And I signed that on May 28th, 2021. I authorized by my signature to payables on the amount of $49,474.23 for the warrant dated June 1st, 2021. That included general fund expenses of $43,643.73. Grant fund expenses of $4,473.50 and other funds of $1,357. And that was from a warrant article. And I signed that on June 3rd, 2021. And then lastly, I authorized by my signature to payroll in the amount of $59,208.48 for a warrant dated June 16th, 2021. And I signed that on June 15th, 2021. All right. We don't have any gifts to accept, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second. All right. Uh, no further discussion. So we'll do a roll call vote. Ron?
Let me know. I.
Sarah Bass?
Penny, I.
Margaret?
Stanser, I.
Brenda?
Marlon, I.
And Hall, I. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night.